Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the board of selectmen. For Tuesday, September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, seven P M. I called need to order and we'll start with the pledging allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of the United States.
Thank you. We're gonna have a couple of scheduling house key things there very quickly. I'd like to make a motion to move the consideration of transfer of Seventy Sunset Hill to the Bethel Land Trust for preservation of open space up to the first item on the agenda. And while I move your second, all favor, aye. And motion carries, we'll put that up to the front. I would like to add, I make a motion to add to the general, oh, thank you very much. I think a motion to add to the agenda. Consideration of enforcement of Connecticut general statutes, section twelve, one forty-six A, when issuing and renewing licenses. And we can add that right before the consideration of one forty-six B. I can say it, on favor, aye, opposed, none, motion carries. I'd like to add, I make a motion to add to the end of the agenda, consideration of approval of appointment for vacancy on public site and building commission. Second, oh, oh, for, sorry, is that on favor, aye, opposed, none, motion carries, since added. And finally. I make a motion to add to the end of the agenda, consideration of previously approved ARPA funds for the Bethel Fire Department of six thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars. All favor, aye, motion carries. Okay. We do that. Excellent. So first up. I want to make a motion for discussion of consideration of transfer of Seventy Sunset Hill Road to the Bethel Land Trust for preservation of open space. Second, all favor, aye, for discussion. Okay, so let's go ahead, Luke. I'd like you to step in and tell us about the project.
For Hoyt Road, Bethel, here at behalf of the Board of Directors of the Bethel Land Trust to advocate for the transfer of said. Lots to the Bethel Land Trust for three principal reasons. The first is it'll. We've always had access off of Sunset to the Miller property until that was told, a couple of years ago. Losing that has been a problem. This will permit us to have access to part of the park. That we don't currently have access to unless we carry everything and there's no road or anything separating from our parking lot. I'm getting old and I have a big heavy paint on, so it's not so easy anymore. Second reason is to allow people in the area to walk. We're gonna have a trail, no parking, but a trail to give them a walking access from Sunset, so they don't drive all the way to our parking area, which is limited. And take up the parking spaces. And then the third, this will in fact give us a hundred acres of property in that one spot. And there are certain benefits and certain kinds of things that you can qualify for in terms of grants and studies for properties, a hundred acres and more. What was the word being primarily, okay, well, they know that, sure, you guys can't use that.
So, yeah, so this has been, this was, oh.
Yeah, I went in front of planning and zoning commission and they unanimously recommended this, this transfer to us. I think they cited the good works that the Bethel Land Trust does in helping to maintain town-owned property as well as our own town-owned property. The educational park, overlook park, the front preserve and the board lawn. So I think that was definitely part of it, but I also didn't see, based on the necessity of doing this, I didn't see any downs.
Right. And I think one of the, one of the big things, we're talking about access also for folks who live on Sunset.
Exactly.
That was a big.
No, that's a big part of it. And we've, we've had people saying that for the last couple of years, it would make life easy. It's kind of crazy that they have to drive all the way down Wolf and around in order to get into the preserve. But this literally is the last spot where we could have entrance to it, the lot on. But I can't really go to Jennifer's Lane, that was sold. So that's the way people over there used to access it. This is gonna also provide access for folks that have been coming in that way too.
It's, it's important. I should probably ask the question in public at the moment. Will there be a parking lot put on the property?
No, there will not. Thank you. We are not putting a parking lot. I know there was, there was some talk about that.
There was a lot of room, yes. Rich, you have any thoughts?
No, the part, you know, we just, thank you for bringing that up. No, I mean, Land Trust has a great record and I support this.
So, I made a little goof here and I put it at the front of the agenda and I put it before public comment correspondence. So I'd like to make a motion late on the table just for a moment, all favor, aye, opposed, we're laying on the table, we're gonna go to public comments correspondence just in case if there's anything that is about this. Okay, so any public comments?
I'm actually here in a dual capacity. First capacity is that of a board member of that land trust. And second, as a citizen of Bethel, who plans to spend the rest of his remaining days here in town. I think that we're very happy, thankful that you are considering this, would ask that you transfer it to the Bethel Land Trust. There's been a tremendous amount of development in town. That's, you know, progress. But I do think by transferring this to the Bethel Land Trust, you all are showing that you're thinking into the future. There will be parts of that, we joke about it, that in twenty-five years will look like Manhattan. Speak about Manhattan, and this is the way of looking into the future and setting aside open space, land open space would be needed even more than this today. So thank you for considering this and would ask that you give a little bit of the transfer.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay. Do you have a hand there? Hi Paula, I see you have your hand up. You'll need to unmute yourself.
Good evening, Board of Selectmen. First of all, I want to thank Land Trust for doing such a great job. And I think this idea is great. While I have him captured, I can't see the audience. But I'd like to mention that the signage for the land trust, at least on my road, which is Jacob's Lane, there's two, two different land trust areas. They either need to be made of a different material or replaced. They seem to get very soggy when it rains. And that's all I have to say about that. But other than that, it would be a good idea to maybe mark off the area a little better. Especially on my street because a lot of the properties look like woods and people sort of go exploring and they don't know they're on your property. Other than that, I really hope you allow me time to do a little sideline. I'd like to address this to Selectman Straighten. Hello, how are you? I don't think anybody ever gives you compliments for doing all the years of work that you do, and I'd like to do that. I've been meaning to do it if I ran into you, but I haven't run into you. So I really want to say a big thank you. I have always enjoyed your integrity. How you handle business matters, and I just want to say a big thank you to you and your wife.
Thank you very much, Paula.
And I'd also like to say to, for Selectman Carter, I appreciate your availability. Your very easy availability when people need to talk to you about issues. And I don't know if this should be in this section of the meeting, but I have a topic I would like to discuss. Would I do it here?
Oh, what, what?
I'm sorry.
What is the topic?
Topic is the Planning and Zoning Board.
Okay, well, this is the only place for public comment.
Okay, I'm just gonna capsulize it because I have spoken to you about this in the past. I know you're aware of that. But the issues have become so large that I can no longer remain silent. This past week's meeting was the poster child for improper actions, missing documents. Discussions left out that are really important, and I'm gonna use one project as, I think, the biggest red flag, which is sixty-one South Street. Like I said, I'm not gonna go into it in a lot of detail, but I'll use it as an example that the board never requested, and it was not in the documents. A view of the, the rear of the building, and the reason I say it's so important is because this is a very unusual project. That's being built on a very, very steep slope. For those that don't know, sixty-one South Street is to the rear of the gift cottage. That hill behind it. And there's a lot of different angles that are used to call it one building, possibly because. It's not allowed to have more than one building on that amount of property. The town attorney would know more about that. But, you know, I'd like to know if the same parameters would be allowed to other builders. In other words, what I'm talking about is there's three buildings that are attached by one little tunnel in between each, and they're calling it one building. So, but the concern I have as far as health and safety is the steep slope. Needing special treatment for how it is engineered and built. And I don't believe we ever got a full explanation for that. There are two large, wide retaining walls. I think there's something like sixteen feet high each and, and as wide as the three buildings. My concern is the whole thing collapsing. My other concern is a steep driveway heading right for the edge of the parking area, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So this was just one aspect of one project being discussed. There were other glaring errors in paperwork, some from the police. Things like that, and I will speak to you in detail if we can arrange a time. But there's so many of these that are occurring at such a fast rate, and even when you bring them up to the Planning and Zoning Commission. They say thank you after you make your comment and they're possibly addressed by the applicant's rep. And possibly not. If you, they have you ask all your questions at once, so that when it comes time for the applicant's rep to answer your questions. They pick and choose some and you never get a chance to speak up again and say, hey, you didn't answer this, you didn't answer that. And then before you know it, all of these projects got approved. So with these glaring outstanding health and safety issues, I think we're at a danger point. And I know that you said you could not change the approval of a project because it's the purview of the Z. But I certainly think you can oversee how the meetings are run and if they're adhering to proper procedure. Of asking the right questions, having, you know, and then there's a double standard too. They ask certain applicants. They're very hard on certain applicants and on others, all of these projects are just rushing through. Again, I can give you details, but. Something's really broken here and it's coming down to dangerous projects being allowed. There's a second one where it was a question of where a driveway was placed, and this one happened to be placed on the entrance to the school. One of the, one of the two entrances. You know, it goes on and on. So I would really appreciate a chat with the three of you. And I can give you more details or you can just watch the videos of the meetings to see for yourself. It's mistake after mistake and it's just being pushed through. I noticed that a cease and desist order was issued.
We're gonna have to wrap up.
All right, I am, I am. This is the last thing. I noticed that a cease and desist order was issued by an individual employee that obtained. The raise in his position, not legally, I think.
And we need to wrap up, but I'll assure you this. Number one, we will meet, like we spoke about, we'll meet.
Okay.
While, while we do not have the purview over what the board does or how they approve, we do have the ability to help administer the boards, which means board training and things like that. And we are going to work on that as well as access to information. Well, you're releasing a new website in a couple of weeks, so we're, we'll stay on top of that.
That's great to hear. That's great to hear. All right. Thanks so much.
Thank you for your time, Paul. Appreciate it.
I need Paula's address, please.
What did she say? Paul, can you say your address for the record, please?
Nineteen Jacob's Lane.
Thank you. Okay, additional public comment? Thank you for this last one. Any public correspondence?
No.
Okay, so I'd like to, Marty, you, you have a second? I got a quick question for you. Make sure I understand this. When we do the motion for the consideration of transfer of Seventy Sunset Hill. Do we have to include that it'll be deeded as open space? Because it's currently not deeded as open space.
I'm sorry, Dan. Can you repeat that?
Of course, of course. Currently Seventy Sunset Hill does not have anything, have anything about open space in the D. So when the town of Bethel transfers it, we need to put open space, it will be preserved as open space. Do I need to include that in our motion tonight?
Yeah, I think you should. I, I, what I would do is I would put in that it's passive open space. So in other words, they can't put ball fields up or soccer fields or anything like that.
Thank you, Murray. Does that, does that align with what the land trust is looking to do? Right. Okay, fantastic. So I'd like to remove from table and I just make a motion that we transfer Seventy Sunset Hill Road to the Bethel Land Trust. For the preservation of passive open space.
Passive use.
Passive use, open space? Okay, I'll amend my motion. We'll transfer to Seventy Sunset Hill to the Bethel Land Trust for the preservation of passive use, open space. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Your motion passes. So congratulations.
Okay, we don't have to vote.
No.
Well, that's, I brought all these poor people here.
No, I thought you were bringing for the board. I thought you were bringing for the board.
You know how shaky I am in front of the boards. It would have been nice. Yeah, thank you.
I, I, but, but listen, we, we appreciate everybody showing up. It really is. It's nice to see this board. And it's great to have an opportunity to tell you how much we appreciate what you do in town. It means, it means a lot. The front property is incredible. We've walked it a bunch of times myself and we really appreciate what you do. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you all.
Outstanding. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Barry.
Sorry about that. When I, when I made the motion. Alrighty, okay. I know, right? So next up, we, I, I move that we.
You want to move the other ones up so that.
Well, we just knocked this out, right? I move for the approved, the board of selectmen regular meeting minutes for August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
And all favor, aye, opposed, none, motion carries. I move to approve the board of selectmen's special meeting minutes of August twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three. Second?
Second.
Okay, and I don't have any discussion on this, do you?
No.
Okay, all favor, aye, motion carries. All right, there you go. So now, we're here for our presentation. Today, we have presentation from Aquarian Water Company regarding water quality and environmental projections, conservation of capital projects by none other than George Logan. And please introduce yourself and. Sorry, we had to clear everybody out, George.
No, I know. My audience is like, I have it on my laptop and I have hard copies. Is there a way?
Hard copies are fine. Yeah, I don't think we have.
Worse for me.
Yeah, I don't think we're able to mirror that.
I can't even have enough for our vast audience here.
Did you get one more for Southern Turian? Did we get one more for Southern Turian? He's just gonna be here, he's. Thank you, sir.
Hang out here, if that's okay?
Yeah, it's great.
Great, now, so I am the director of community relations for Aquarian Water Company. And this is not a, a heavy presentation here. What we're trying to do is get out with the community and what we found is that. Folks don't really pay attention to the water company until they have a problem. It's a main break, water main break, or they receive their bills. And we just want to help to educate folks in terms of just have the more of a breadth of what the utility does. Now, I understand, you know, here in Bethel, you have your own water system, you're doing just fine, but in that Stony Hill area, we have a number of, of customers there. And so this is mainly for those folks and for the select boards now. So I will roll through this in less than ten minutes, if that's okay. Second page has the agenda. I'm gonna chat a little bit about Aquarian, consumer usage, conservation program, just a little bit about the distribution system. I'll talk about infrastructure improvements and there's a worse update. So Aquarian, page three. We're the largest, the largest investor-owned utility in New England and are among the seventh largest in the United States. Based in, in Bridgeport, we serve most of Fairfield County, as far up though as Newtown and Bethel. And we're in Litchfield County, we have systems in Danbury, Milford, Fairfield, or even as far as Stonington and Mystic. Even as high north as Simsbury and Grandy. Page four, Stephen idea, Aquarian serves eighty-six systems. In seventy-two cities and towns across New England, New Hampshire, Massachusetts and Connecticut. But if you look below, the vast majority of our customers are right here in Connecticut. We have two hundred and seventeen thousand connections in Connecticut compared to nine thousand in Massachusetts compared to eleven thousand in New Hampshire. Our rate base is about a billion dollars, including all of, all of the pipes and pump stations and. That's water storage tanks. We're in fifty-nine cities and towns in Connecticut. Page five. Supply across Connecticut, just Connecticut. We take care of two hundred and forty-nine wells. Twenty-seven reservoirs, thirty-six dams of varying, various sizes. Treatment facilities, ten surface water treatment facilities, seventy groundwater facilities. You know, one of those tanks right here in Bethel, right? Another Bethel tank. Distribution, three thousand four hundred and forty-seven miles of water main. Hundred seventy-six water storage tanks, ninety-eight pumping stations. Page six, customer satisfaction. This is based on a customer survey, the latest customer by J D Palmer, a very reputable organization. The latest survey shows that ninety-five percent of Aquarian customers are satisfied or extremely satisfied with their service. Historically, Aquarian is among the low, the number of complaints for regulated utilities. There's a chart in the upper right of page six. And it shows total PURA complaints. PURA is our regulatory authority, the public utility regulatory authority. You see back in two thousand and four, we had sixty-six complaints that made their way up to our regulators. We thought that that was unacceptable. We worked hard and one year we cut that in half. And in the last, you know, dozen years or so, you can see that we've been around the handful mark. So if there's an issue or a problem, we do our best to handle it as quickly as possible. Page seven, environmental champions. We consider ourselves stewards of the environment. We had a gentleman here that talked about the land trust. We work with land trusts across our service area. And we actually support land trusts as well financially where we can. Water quality, extremely important, obviously, we're a water utility. Our goal is to have zero violations. And in twenty-twenty-two, we had zero violations. And the environment, we want to make sure we're very careful about protecting our environment. We want to have a hundred percent environmental compliance record. In twenty-twenty-two, we achieved that. We also want in terms of when you start thinking about the climate change and. Use of fossil fuels. We're looking to be carbon neutral by twenty-thirty. We're doing that a number of ways. Why? We're switching over systematically our fleet to electric vehicles where we can. We've put solar panels on various treatment plants and, and office buildings as well. And some folks have asked in other meetings, well, how are you gonna get to carbon neutral? I mean, you have all these big, you know, water's heavy, right? It's a lot of electricity. We also will be purchasing carbon credits as well, energy credits as well, because what that does is it encourages. Decarbonizing the grid, right? We want to be able to have our electric grid be mostly supplied by. By non-carbon means. Comprehensive conservation program is used to manage supplies when necessary. So we have a conservation program. Page eight, we really couldn't do all of that without having, you know, a great and strong workforce. So we focus on our workforce. We've been, Aquarian has been a top performer, a top place to work in Connecticut, six times in the last dozen years or so. Community involvement, over one-third of Aquarian's employees are volunteer. We have three hundred and forty employees. And again, over a third of them volunteer for various organizations. Page nine, challenges facing the water industry, aging infrastructure, PFAS, emerging contaminants, PFAS. This is a group of man-made chemicals, these forever chemicals. We're looking to address that. Lead and copper rule in terms of service lines, lead service lines. We're looking at replacing all of our lead service line. The challenge is identifying where those lead service lines are, and that is going to cost overall system-wise in tens of millions of dollars. Stream flow regulations are regulators, the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection are pushing that we release more water to help the ecosystem. Which we are in favor of, but there is a. An effect there, right? We will be reducing our available supply from a hundred million gallons per day to eighty-five million gallons per day, Sydney system line in Connecticut. That's significant. And so how, what do we, what do we have to do? The need for new water supplies and new infrastructure to move the water and also conserving the water we have. Aging workforce, right? So many companies are, and, and organizations are challenged with that. We have a large number of retirees. I've been at Aquarian for over thirty-one years and I'm becoming an old timer at the water company. But a lot of the younger folks, you know, they're there for five, four, five, six years and they move on to other things. So a changing workforce. Rising customer expectations of folks that expect and demand a high level of reliability of their water supply. And we're also being hit with the new irrigation systems, the proliferation of irrigation systems is really problematic. Now, what does Aquarian bring to the table? Page ten. Those, that first group there, those first four bullets there, we are a professional organization with big responsibility, right? With only utility where people actually ingest the product that we deliver. We are an experienced organization. Aquarian cares about the customer. Aquarian wants to be responsible to the environment and Aquarian supports a knowledgeable and diverse workforce. The last section there, you can see deep technical bench, a solid engineering, operational regulatory hurdles. I mentioned the three hundred and forty employees. And to summarize again, a hundred percent environmental compliance record, zero, zero health-based water quality violations. And over the years, we've acquired and integrated eighty-four systems and twenty-six different transactions to two thousand and eleven. The next page, we'll go really quickly. The one thing I just want you to focus on is that this is what we're seeing a system-wide, even more so in the south. Western part, prevailing part of the state, but thirty-eight percent of all water use is outdoor. Think about that for a second. I talked about that hundred million and gallons per day and eighty-five million gallons per day, thirty-eight percent. Is water that's being treated, it's being pumped, it's being moved all around and folks are throwing it in the air, right, to water their lawns. So we're not, we're okay with that, but we're asking folks to do on the next page, page twelve. We've been asking folks throughout the, our systems to try to change behaviors and encourage twice weekly watering. We believe you'll have a healthier lawn if you water your lawn only twice a week as opposed to every day. The roots will, will feel, will be inclined to. Grow deeper and you'll have a healthier lawn. In some parts of our system, not here in Bethel, we have a mandatory twice weekly, it's frequently irrigation system. We encourage all to do that. Page thirteen, I'll skip over really quickly. It just shows that we're looking at quantitatively speaking. In our Fairfield County area, after the two thousand sixteen drought, we enacted these water conservation measures. And you can see to the left of the red line is prior to two thousand sixteen and to the right, these, those are demands. So demands have been lowered since we incorporated these work. And the next page. Again, we looked at an area at Fairfield County in the San Flow area, and the blue lines represents days of, blue lines, days of the week. You see the two bars together, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, seven days of the week. The pairs, the blue line represents prior to conservation and the twice-per-week watering in those communities where we have mandatory twice-per-quartering. And the green line, the green bar represents the, you know, you can see the reduction. Every day, week. So remember, as a water utility, we design our systems to meet peak demand. And every day a week. So remember, as a water utility, we uh design our systems to meet peak demands, right? Fire flow demands, um uh irrigation demands and and with irrigation being thirty percent, particularly in summer months. That is a lot of uh infrastructure uh to meet those uh demands. I'm gonna skip over page uh fifteen, but that just shows some of the. By some of the savings that we've had in Fairfield County, but Bethel, probably not should that. Uh page sixteen, why do we do that? Usage review, want to have a better understanding of everyday water use. Uh most customers are water efficient. We're finding that a small number of users in each customer class. And uh are very large users, right? So the folks are larger properties with big irrigation system. Irrigation has become pervasive in some areas. Uh we want to help change behaviors and again, we encourage twice per week watering. On page seventeen. Uh you can't fight a fire if there's no water in the tank. And that's why, part of my conservation is so important. Page eighteen. Uh in the past, the more water, the water uh Aquarien uh sold, the more money the company made. And at the same time, we're asking folks to conserve water, to use less water, right? They're not, they're not compatible. So we worked with our regulators and we decoupled rates. So that uh uh Aquarien, based on uh uh from our, based on our our regulators' decisions. Uh makes a uh uh a lot of certain amount of profit every year. So if we sell, uh if it's a uh. A dry year and we sell more water, we have to give that, those extra earnings back to our customers. Uh and if it's a wet year and we sell less water. Conversely, there's a surcharge so that the profit is the same every year. So now Aquarien is not incentivized to sell more water. Where now we are more encouraged and our our uh rate structure uh is consistent with that. To conserve water and that helps keep expenses down. That helps uh minimize uh uh. Capital improvements that we have to do to meet growing and growing demands. And I'm gonna skip a little bit more. We're gonna go. All the way to page twenty-two. It shows your water distribution system, page twenty-two, there's a little map there. And really what we want to show is that we serve a small portion of Bethel. A strong but uh s- small but mighty section of Bethel. And Stonington Hill area, we have the Bethel, Bethel tanks in the middle there, but we are also connected to the Newtown system as well. And so we work to regionalize and connect the uh the systems. You can see the Newtown tank uh plays a role uh there as well. So there's a lot to, you know, a lot going on, even in our small system here in uh in in Bethel. Page twenty-three. That's just a part of our our infrastructure improvements. We do have uh now an ongoing, uh it's a regulator that we are. Uh replacing, an important one that helps move water from New Haven to Bethel. And. I, we can go to page twenty-five. Uh we never know the worth of water till the well runs dry. And I'll leave it at that. If there are any questions. Uh please, but I appreciate the uh the time and the uh your interview.
In your um surveys for the lead and within um. And copper lines and copper lines of. And lead and something. Have you found any around?
Yes, definitely have. No, we were constantly finding uh lead lines. You know, it's uh it's difficult in a, in the way because um. Aquarien is responsible for the service line from the main in the street to roughly the, roughly the property line or the curb. Right, it's it's responsible from the property line or the curb out into the home. And there are instances, instances where in the past. The portion that the water company is responsible for has replaced, but the service, uh the service line going to the home is responsible to the homeowner. Or the property owner uh is not. So trying to identify that. We also are challenged that, let's say we do find a lead service line. Aquarien is responsible for the portion I mentioned, right, from street to the property line. But you could cause more harm if you just replace part of the service line, because now you're breaking the line, you're, you know, the uh the. The right, right. The lead now can. But it's challenged with having a mechanism for paying for that, because now you're going into someone's property, you know, replacing their property. And then asking all of the customers that, throughout our 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 customer base to pay for. So we're working with the regulators. Uh to try to, you know, make that, because this is such an important uh you know, health issue. Uh so that's an example of working with our regulators.
And and just, yeah, I'm. Two-fold, you know, just because we have our own water, our air that, that we're the selectmen around the Public Utility Commission. Um is, do you know if any of those lines in, are in the more like Bridgeport and the big city areas or is it? More rural or?
The lead service, it's pervasive. It's a matter of when they were installed. Uh particularly where there's the forties, fifties and even sixties. Uh that's where we're fi- finding, you know, homes that were built during that time. So that is just pervasive throughout all of Connecticut, really. Yeah, and but, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, real quick, I noticed we were talking about Berkshire. Uh recently, I saw one of the wells is gonna be decommissioned.
That's correct, that's right.
Is that part of this whole moving water around thing you're talking about?
Absolutely, yes. And it allows us to do that, yeah, as well. Uh yes, that's correct.
But so what makes, what makes it happen? Like you get to a certain point, was the well not functioning? Or you just, it was just easier for you guys to bring the water from somewhere else?
Yeah, and in that specific uh case, um it's a matter of um capacity. It's a mad, right? It's a matter of water of quality. Um and it was more cost-effective to bring water from the greater Bridgeport system. Right, into uh Bethel and it's more reliable uh as well. And when you look at the, the volume in terms of uh the safe yield for the well compared to what we could bring in through um connecting the mains and regional.
Okay.
I'll tell you the story after.
Um I I assume um you guys are getting ready for P FAS and the.
Oh.
Increase.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And and the EPA regulations there, they are recommending a uh, you know. Maximum contamination levels of of four parts per trillion. I mean, when you think about that.
Ridiculous.
Twenty years ago, we couldn't even measure, you know, to that, you know, to that level, four parts per trillion. And there's a huge cost. Uh you know, to treating for P FAS as well. However, uh these forever chemicals, you know, no one can argue. We don't want them in our bodies.
Yeah.
You know, and so that's where we are, we're at and. Working with our regulators.
Hey Marty, you're, you need to mute.
Sorry about that.
No worries, no worries. Uh yeah, so P FAS, we've already started to install uh some uh P FAS treatment system. So, you know, it can't be done. Uh a lot of it is uh, you know, carbon, you know, based as far as filtration. That's gonna be issued too, because all over the country, folks are doing it. So there's gonna be an issue in terms of once everybody starts doing this. As far as uh availability of materials and that's that sort of thing. So we're working through that now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. And and by the way, we we have one of our key members of the water company right here. He works for the uh. We'll uh we'll also get this out, folks, to let them know you're here. Thank you.
Your recordings, right?
Yep.
Yeah. Thanks again.
All right. Um.
We're on a mixed.
Okay, and so um um I'll make a motion for a consideration. Of enforcement of Connecticut general statute, section twelve, one forty-six A, when issuing and renewing licenses. All favor for discussion. I, okay. And I'm much in Paris. So it's um, it's come to our attention recently that we've had a few restaurants that where the tax collector. Has uh called the. Health department not to issue a life, uh food service license, uh predicated on the fact that. One forty-six A, the statute gives us the ability to withhold licensure. There's a. Uh it doesn't see ability actually to withhold um or revoke, suspend or revoke licenses. Thank you for not paying me taxes. But um what what I don't believe has ever happened, we've kind of done a look through the statute or through the uh the past meetings and. The board of selectmen, I don't think has ever weighed in on this or something. So it would be important, you know, just to kind of talk about it. We can. Whether or not we want to have the three of us vote on it or not, it it's worth continuing because Brian couldn't make it, but.
Yeah, I'd like to have Brian's opinion. Uh Marty, have you looked at this at all? Yeah.
Got on mute. Yes, yes, yes. Yes, yes, I have.
Okay.
So I think there, there are two, there are two things to think about. Number one, is it something that we want to consider doing? And if we did. The other part of it is maybe whether or not we would try to set up some sort of ability of work with a tax collector or a payment plan.
Payment plan.
And if we did that, I think we would have to, as a board of selectmen, say what that payment plan is.
Yeah. And 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 uh a duration, you know, it takes.
Right. Right.
Not taken care of within a certain amount of time that. And I have to look at other.
Yeah, it's a, it's a tough thing to think, you know.
You can't let it go forever.
Right, right. Now, again, it's a may, I mean, and and the other thing is, we would have to, we'd have to do this for any town issued license. Like we'd have to put it out there, not just, I mean, that's the big one, right? Because that's the big issue, but anytime that there is a um. A license of any kind, we can do that.
I think.
So if we want to, if we want to table it, to actually have a vote on it and work with the tax collector, what we think a payment plan would be.
Well, yeah, all right, let's, let's get some more information. Let's tape that for, for this meeting and then Brian asks here, but if we could. Marty can look at it and and you you can talk to the tax collector and get their opinion and. And then go back to Marty to, you know, what the legalities are.
Right.
You know, come up with some. Did you have something to add, Marty? Some kind of timeframe?
N- no, I I really don't have much to add. The only thing that I would say is you really should pass something at some point. Because the statute doesn't say shall or will, it says may. So you want to make sure it's on the record that the town's position is, we are going to do this in the future, so.
Right.
Does that require a public hearing?
No.
Oh, okay.
No.
Okay, so um I move, we lay on the table the consideration of uh section one, excuse me, section twelve, one forty-six A. For a future meeting in this quarter. All favor?
I.
I. Okay, so it's on the table. Um. I move uh for discussion, consideration enforcement of Connecticut general statute, twelve dash one forty-six B, when issuing and renewing licenses. In a second.
Hi.
And for discussion, all favor? I.
I.
Okay, none of both. So the similar, similar situation, um statute one forty-six B. Um also says that if we can, uh if a municipality, uh somebody has failed to pay property taxes and we owe somebody money back. We can hold that money instead of paying it back to somebody who owes property tax to the town. So this one's probably a little clearer in a sense, you know, if we decide to do this. It'll, it'll, it'll be, again, a may. You know, if we, if we want to withhold paying until they pay. Um, I think this is, this is a pretty clear, you know, we can go with it. Again, I think all three of us, we should discuss.
Yeah, I, I agree.
I don't, yeah.
Yeah, it's because it's really the first I've seen of.
Yeah, yeah, that's kind of it. I figured I'd throw it out here. This is a, since Brian didn't come, I kept it on the agenda anyway.
Yeah, well, put it on as important, people are aware of it, they can make comments on it for the next meeting too.
Yeah.
So the motion to the table, but.
Okay, um second, all favor?
I.
I. And uh it's tabled. Okay, here's an easy one. I ca- I'll make the motion to get to uh accept workforce development grant for Bethel Health Department, the amount of forty-three thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
Second.
Okay, discussion, we have the information here. Um basically, this is um. Workforce grant, uh it's a five-year uh grant that was given uh to the CDC. And then Bethel gets a portion of it. Um the Bethel, it's all basically by the town and department who gets the funding. This was already put out there. They, we can use this for a number of things, um including administration. You know, so it gets workforce development grant. There's no reason not to take this. Uh so I, I, I don't think I have any further discussion. There's nothing except uh accepting it. There's no, there's no strings in them with that we have to consider.
It it's, it's, it's uh for uh Laura's.
Yes. Yeah. Okay. Um, all in favor?
I.
Both none, or some carries? Uh next one, I, I move we accept. Uh ARPA funds designated for the Bethel Senior Center from the state of Connecticut for a maximum contract award of forty-two thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. That second?
Second.
So uh. Basically, we uh, we've applied for this. Um it will be effective uh December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Uh the plan has been given to the state of Connecticut and the idea is to remediate the bathrooms in the senior center.
Good.
Um they're pretty poor shape.
Yeah.
As we all know, so uh.
Those are the ones in the back of the big meeting, correct?
Um.
Words at all.
No, it's actually the one in the hallway.
The one in the hallway?
The hallway. And um it'll be, you know, cleaned up and put uh eighty-eight. Uh required, you know, all that sort of stuff in it. So. Yeah, pretty straightforward.
Ex- ex- excuse me, Dan. Is that, isn't it also, isn't it, I thought it was to basically remodel the kitchen and to work on the women's. Bathroom.
Women's bathroom. I don't believe we added the kitchen to this, did we? I thought we stuck with the bathroom. There's talk about adding the kitchen. And that would certainly be within the scope of the grant.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I read that.
They have the kitchen? So I thought we took it out.
Yeah.
I've just got the grant paperwork in front of me, the actual acceptance. We can go back and take a look at that. If if they did put the, the kitchen back into it, that's well within the, the grant. The priority was the bathroom.
Yeah, okay. Trying to find it in my notes, but that's all right. Go ahead. I'm, I'm, I don't want to hold anybody up here. We're gonna get the grant. I would assume you're gonna approve the grant no matter if it's for kitchen or bathrooms or both, so.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, not getting too many more of these opportunities. So when this came out, um, you know, we all jumped on it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Any, any further discussion here?
Great.
Okay, um all in favor?
I.
Both, none, motion please. Okay, um I move that we. Uh. Hold on here. I move that we authorize the tax refunds in the amount of nine thousand one hundred ninety-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents. Due to overpayment of taxes.
Second.
So uh, pretty clear here, uh. Yeah, I don't think there's any discussion. All right, ready? I'll try your mind. All in favor?
I.
I, both none, motion please. All right. Here we go. Uh we've added the last one on here. Uh make sure we're this product, uh. There's one piece of paper, okay. Um, I will, I will make a motion to approve ARPA funds from the previous proof funding. Uh for the Bethel Fire Department. Of six thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars even.
Second.
Okay, chief, would you like to?
Uh this is just uh, as you know, it took over about two and a half years ago now. Um we needed a lot of equipment. So in the two and a half years I've been there with the, my fellow officers, we have worked hard diligently to. Upgrade and replace equipment that's been. Uh ventilation saus, SCBA gear, which I've come to you gentlemen multiple times for in the border finance. Um hose, which we're in the midst of the hose replacement now. Um. The only thing I'm, I'm gonna have left after this hose will be uh basically will be some five inch. Um all the lower hose has been replaced. It's tested every year. It has a twenty-year lifespan. Um approximately, it was tested every year. We have records for all of it and the hose that was old and outdated. We got rid of. This replaces that hose. You know, like I said, it's just, it's continuous rope equipment that I've come to you guys for. Um. All kinds of other various equipment. And we're, we're close to this being done and then there's other stuff to move on to. Um, you know, besides apparatus, which is a whole nother ball of wax, we all know that. Um, but this, this gets us the equipment that goes on all the apparatus and it's all up to date. And it's all tested regularly, so we know it's all good.
If I may, just reference the, for the dollar amount per hose.
Sure. Way.
So, so that's just reference uh the per hose purchase for the.
Yes.
Right, I, yeah, I gave, there is a sheet up there. And I um I can give another one to her when we leave tonight. It, this is the three-inch fire hoses, sixteen fifty-foot length reach. Um and it's not cheap, but it's not really expensive. It's three hundred and eighty-nine dollars each.
Yeah.
Um but like I said, it's got a approximate twenty-year lifespan. Um I've tried very hard and.
Um, I've tried very hard in the last two and a half years to kind of spread things out so that now we kind of have a plan going forward for whoever's in charge. At that point, you know, fifteen, say fifteen years from now, that they know that they're gonna have to start replacing hoses again and do X amount per year to get it back to where it should be, you know? And that's the way to do it. You don't wanna go out and have to replace all of those. That's crazy. So this, this breaks it up and makes it more palatable to the taxpayer to do it.
Okay, and um, and just, so you know, too, I, I did do some calculations. I don't know if they match with you, we have, um. Up until now, we've had, uh, out of the seventy-five thousand, we've had sixty-four thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars, twenty-four cents approved.
Right.
So this will, will add on. So uh, this will leave us with about forty-one hundred and twenty dollars.
Correct, that's about where I'm at too.
Okay.
On the fire side, yes.
On the fire side, yeah, on the fire side. And um, and 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 just for anybody who's listening, the board of selectmen previously uh approved seventy-five thousand dollars for the Bethel Fire Department side and seventy-five thousand dollars for the Bethel EMS side for the chiefs to, you know, work on and
Same thing for Stoney Hill.
Okay, so that's where we stand now, Rich.
Yep.
Do you want me to let, um?
Well, just the, well, the, the motion was to spend that amount of money, but I just want a reference for the hose.
And we, we did that on record, okay. Any?
No, that's it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed and motion carries. Next, thank you. Uh, let's see here. So that was our final.
No.
Oh, yeah, there we go. Boy, let's put that, we added that on there too. All right. By the way, there. Okay. Okay, um, so I make a motion that we appoint Gerald Roche of forty-two Chestnut Street, number two to fill the vacancy on the public site and building commission.
Second.
So uh, this has been a seat that's been vacant for some period of time. We tried to put people in it, they never accepted the job. And so uh, we're back at it again. Um, we talked to Gerald, he's very excited about doing it. He's a background in construction.
Yeah.
So, yeah, perfect person. Okay. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so, or less? None, motion carries, okay. We do the new, we do the deal?
Yeah.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
We stand as Jer. Thank you, everybody.